Good evening and welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Plating Board. Today is Monday, January 10th, 2022, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, Meetings Act, sorry. We have correspondence. We have a letter from Mayor Barbario dated January 7th, 2022. Reappointing Jennifer Veely as a Class II member of the Plating Board for a term ending December 31st, 2022. We have a letter from Mayor Barbario dated January 7th, 2022. Reappointing Tom Dinsmore as a Class IV member of the Plating Board for a term ending December 31st, 2025. Letter from Mayor Barbario dated January 7th, 2022. Appointing Gordon Meth as a Class IV member of the Plating Board for a term ending December 31st, 2025. And finally, a letter from Mayor Barbario dated January 7th, 2022. Appointing Ted Stanziel as alternate number one of the Plating Board for a term ending December 31st, 2023. If we could have the swearing in of the members by the attorney?
Yeah, you guys do it.
Do them all at the same time?
Yep. Yeah, we just have to read off our own position.
Okay, please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
Well, just before you start, you did not get one from the clerk's office, did you?
I did not receive one from the clerk's office, so, but I did make one up for you.
I know. Okay, so you want to announce, I'm also there?
Yes, we also have Councilman DePiero, appointed as a Class III member for a term ending December 31st, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Aye, State of the Union.
Aye.
Tom Dinsmore.
I am.
Ted Stanziel.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the Office of.
Of the duties of the Office of.
Plating Board Member, Class IV.
Township of Persipony Troy.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much.
Right, so, I am opening the floor for nominations for Chairperson of the Plating Board.
Nora, I'd like to make a nomination.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate somebody who I've had a lot of experience with over the last few years, served as a mentor to me, has served as Vice Chair of this committee for the last four years as well, and Chairman before that, I believe. I'd like to nominate Tom Dinsmore for Chairman of the Plating Board.
It's my honor to second that.
Any other nominations? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the nominations.
I'd like to move the nominations be closed.
Is she our second?
Second, John Von Aiken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all very, very much. I have enjoyed this board a lot. I think there's a lot of good talent on this board. We've always done things for Team Persipony, as it were, rather than any political party or anything like that. And the level of wisdom on here from our council member and from our new members is phenomenal, so I'm looking forward to a fantastic year with this group. In that vein, I am going to nominate for Vice Chairman, the man who did, I thought, an excellent job as Chairman last year, John Van Aken, to move forward with keeping Team Persipony alive.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
I'll second that.
Mr. Napolitano, thank you very much. Do I hear any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
Some moves.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I would like to reaffirm nominate, or whatever it is, the Board Secretary Nora Jolie. I think she's done a fantastic job and kept us on our toes and kept the public properly informed of what's going on.
Thank you.
Is there, is there, is that a nomination process? I've forgotten.
There has been in the past, yes.
I nominate Nora Jolie. Second, Veely.
Beat me to it.
Are there any other nominations? Move the nominations be closed? Do I have a second?
Seconded, John Von Aiken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Nora.
Thank you.
All right. The appointment to the Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee, I would, we have in the past simply had the Chairman name people to the committee.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to ask John Van Aken to be the Chairman of the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee.
Happily accept, Chairman.
I would like to ask one of our new members, Gordon Meth, to be on the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee.
Thank you, and I accept, Mr. Chairman.
Jennifer Veely has also indicated that she would like to be on the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, and I think that that would be fantastic to have her knowledge and her experience on that committee.
Thank you, I accept.
Mr. Veely has also indicated, though he's not here tonight, that he would like to be on the Minor Committee, and I would like to name him to that, to the Minor Committee. And do we have?
That leaves one more.
I know. Do we have a member here who would like to be on the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee? I would love to, I would love to put Mr. DeBeech on that Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, and it sounds like a good group, and look forward to having you do that job. All right, now, as for the appointment of Planning Board Professionals, we have the three listed here on our reorganization meeting agenda. Stuart Weiser is the Planner from ARH. If you could give us just a little bit of a background?
Sure. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Stuart Weiser. I'm the Vice President of Planning and Environmental Services for ARH Associates. I am a graduate of Dickinson College in Carlisle, Pennsylvania.
Almost won there.
Really? Yep. With a, we'll talk later, with a degree in what is now called Public Policy in 1987. I've been a, I am a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, been so since October of 2000. I also have the AICP, which is the National American Institute of Certified Planners designation since again 2000. Early in my career, or my first job in my career, I was various planning capacities for the City of Atlantic City from 1988 to about the end of 2001. My last position was the Director of Redevelopment. I was with Remington and Vernick Engineers from the end of 2001 to February 2018, and have been with ARH Associates since that time. I have represented as the Board Planner for many, many planning boards, zoning boards, and combined land use boards. Again, I've been the Board Planner, Special Projects Planner, Redevelopment Planner, as well as Planner for private clients when we've appeared before the Board. That's sort of me, and I hope to, to perform for you up to your expectations.
Very good. We have as an appointment for our engineer, Andrew Kangiano. I think we know him.
Thank you very much for the, for the appointment. It would be my pleasure and honor to serve the Board again this year, so thank you very, very much.
It's, it's the cookies. It's always the cookies.
Yep. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let, let you lapse on that, but that's too much. And tonight, we have your substituting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Daniel Legana from the firm Cleary Giacobi Alferi and Jacobs, sitting in for Mr. Garcia this evening, who has a conflict. Our firm represents multiple municipalities. I myself represent multiple land use boards throughout the state. I've been practicing law for about 13 years. I'm a graduate of Fordham University and Western Michigan Law School, and can represent municipalities at various levels, from borough attorney to land use boards, currently serving multiple boards, and now that I know this Board has a sweet tooth, I will be competing with cookies, so it's a pleasure to be here.
Other than Michael, is there anybody who remembers Dave Stivers?
I remember.
Okay. Dave Stivers used to work for Nabisco, and he would bring stuff in.
And he would always ask what year, what time of day aerial photos were taken.
Dave, Dave Stivers worked with me for about 15 years ago when we initiated an ordinance in town, any of our township employees who were called to active duty, we wanted an ordinance that would make up the difference in pay if they made less than, in the military than they made here, we would make up the difference in pay so their families didn't suffer, and that, that ordinance is renewed every year.
Excellent.
Dave Stivers and I pushed that through.
Used to call him the Colonel, but regardless. Can we do this as a group, or should we do them one at a time? No, do them one at a time. I would like to find out if somebody would like to move the appointment of Stuart Weiser, Planner, ARH. After a little discussion, we got.
Why don't you move all three at once?
Yeah.
I'll move, I'll move all three.
Stuart Weiser, Andrew Kangiano, and Joseph Baygar, Cia Attorney. I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Oh. You can have it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Unless there's something else that needs to come forward, I declare this reorganization meeting adjourned. Done. All right, let's move on. You have your packets here. The packets include the 2022 schedule for Planning Board meetings. Please, everybody take it home, study it carefully, and if there are any conflicts, we'll figure out a way around them. Then we move on, and we've got a chance to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me just start with, the announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. I'd like to do a Pledge of Allegiance at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Moving on next, this meeting is open to the general public. Are there members of the general public that have items that they wish to bring before this Board at this time that are not currently on our agendas? Hearing and seeing none, we move on next. Nora, could you call a roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. DeBeech.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Meth.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stanziel.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our Board Planner, Mr. Weiser.
Here.
Board Engineer, Mr. Kangiano.
Here.
And our Board Attorney, Mr. Legana.
Here.
All right, we're not going to do the Pledge of Allegiance again, even though it's on the agenda. So we will move on to the first item on the agenda, and that's the Township of Persipony, 3339 Route 46, Pump House Road, Block 411, Lots 24.01, 24.02, Application Number 21:528, a courtesy review for a well replacement and treatment facility improvements.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I'm John Weirka, I'm with the Water Department, Superintendent of Water. I'm here for you.
Sir, before you, before you give some testimony, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
John Weirka, 15th 4th Avenue, Martin.
Can you please spell your last name? Thank you, sir.
I'm here tonight to talk about our, one of our wells that are, one of our oldest wells in our system. It's our well 1K. It's a 54-year-old well, built in 1958. Through the years, the well has deteriorated and no longer has.
Nora, can you pick him up? Nora?
Yes, you know what, John, would you mind sitting down and speaking into the mic?
I don't mind.
Perfect, thank you.
I didn't know what the protocol, but anyway. An existing well is on our property where our water department is. It's part of a very large parcel that includes, I believe, the police department, our facility, DPW, and backs up the Noble Street. The well is a existing block building, is no longer feasible to rehabilitate this well. It has deteriorated both the underground portion and the above ground portion, and we have determined that the best course of action right now is to go towards a replacement well. The replacement well will be within 25 feet of the existing well. It'll be built to current standards, standards back in 1958 are very different than they are today.
John, is this, is this the well where the mineral deposits have accumulated inside the pipe?
Well, that's typical of any groundwater well. Yes, but we, we have worked the mineral deposits, we can work with redeveloping wells and getting that somewhat cleaned up, but this well has deteriorated, the actual well itself is iron, and the, the material has gone to, just about totally deteriorated. So it isn't feasible now to do anything with that well. We've sleeved it, I don't want to get into too much detail, but we've sleeved it and we've shrunk that diameter down to such a size that we can only pump so much water out of it. The well is permitted to pump 600,000 gallons per day out of it. We are not getting nowhere near that. The replacement well will bring us back up to that 600,000 gallons per day. The production well has already been drilled and is in the ground. Now we need a treatment facility to go around it. We have obtained our DEP permits, both land use and our Bureau of Safe Drinking Water permit to construct, and we are currently finalizing our design for this. It will be a treatment facility also. The treatment will be water softening, control some of the hardness of our water. We will have pH adjustment, we'll have aeration for CO2 removal from the water, and finally chlorination for disinfection. The fairly simple process. This is one of three wells that will come before the Board this year. This is the first one, and one that has the least amount of treatment towards it. We will be getting our gas, electric, and sewer facilities from the Noble Street End. There will be some trees that we need to take down. I believe we are seven, seven or eight trees that will need to be removed, ranging in size from about 8-inch caliper up to about 30-inch caliper. They're in a cluster altogether. We will be replacing those trees with replacement trees. There will also be an emergency gas generator on, on the site for, in the event we lose power during a storm or any other related emergency. And the estimated duration of this project is probably about one year, and that's all dependent on how things go with COVID and supply chain.
Is there anything else I can address towards the Board?
Just one question. The, the old one won't be functioning until you cut over the new one?
Yes, yes, we have made some interim improvements. I, I didn't mention that, that old well was out of service for most of 2020 and a good part of 2021 because it was producing no water. We have done a, really, it's just a temporary fix by sleeving the well to get us some water till we can get this up and running. Like I said, this process is probably a good year in duration.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any members of the Board have questions of this witness, on this testimony?
I have a question. What happened to the old well?
It's still there.
Did you take it out, leave it there?
We, we will, we will have it decommissioned and removed upon completion of the new well and its inserts.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
What was the height of the fence?
Six-foot fence, and typically, we have three strand barbed wire around the perimeter of it.
Okay, so six-foot high with barbed wire?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's on the record.
Any other members of the Board have any questions? Any members of the public have questions on this witness's testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Any of our professionals have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, there is a BFJ report that was forwarded to us by your previous planner, and she did have two questions that she wanted to have answered other than what the applicants already answered. The first one being testimony regarding the impacts to wetlands and floodplain areas, which they understand are subject to DEP, and we've heard you have your permits, and then the overall increase in impervious coverage, that's one question. And then the other one is, are you planning on using any sustainable or green infrastructure?
I'm not sure what you mean by the green infrastructure. This is a well, it does run off electricity. As far as the wetlands, we are not in the wetlands and we're not in the transition area, so we won't be impacting them. And what was your third question?
They were talking about wetlands, oh, would there be any increase, overall increase in impervious coverage?
Yes, the building, the building will be, not quite large, but larger than what's there. What's there now is probably the size of a typical shed. It just is not capable of housing the treatment equipment that's needed inside the building. I believe the building is 24 by 36. I, I'd have to take a quick look at the plans, but in, in that neighborhood, and there's also an ancillary part of that building, 12 by 12, that will house a storage unit that will be inside it. But we will maintain the driveway is gravel, and it's just really the roof area, the sidewalk up to the building.
Thank you. That's all they have from this letter, Mr. Chairman, other than to say that part of the requirements of the Board, and the Attorney will go into detail, is to make a ruling that the applicant, or the, the project is consistent with the master plan, and according to Ms. Vivate, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yes.
She gives a couple of indications in her report as to how it's consistent, so we would concur.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just have one question. You stated that there's going to be an emergency gas generator on site?
Yes.
Where exactly is that gas generator going to be located?
It'll be right out, well, when I say right out in front, this facility is in the woods. Out front is kind of to the eye of the beholder, depending on from where you're coming, but it will be adjacent to the building. It'll be an exterior installation.
Any idea of when the generator will be test run?
Test run, well, that, that's normally done during working hours.
Okay, that's all I wanted to get on the record, that they will be done at a working hour timeframe. Thank you.
Okay, any other members from?
Mr. Chairman? DeBeech? Quick question. So will this gas generator will kick off automatically at some, at some event, or is it manual operation?
It, it's currently scheduled to be an automatic generator. If no power goes out, it will go on.
Thank you. Mr. Meth?
Yes, one question on the generator. It's, obviously, there's fuel that goes with it, right?
It's going to be natural gas.
Natural gas, okay. So there's no storage tank? It's just like, that's the gas?
No, unless the gas company throws us a curve ball and says, tells us they can't service, but it is the intent to have a natural gas generator.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other members? Hearing and seeing none. Do you have anything else to present?
No, sir.
All right, any members of the public wish to speak on this matter at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Any members of the Board wish to say anything at this time? I'm trying to remember what we're supposed to do with regard to a courtesy review. We're supposed to move that we find is consistent with the master plan?
That's correct, the Chairman.
All right, do I hear a motion that we find this to be consistent with the master plan?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Nora, would you call the roll, please? Or call the vote?
Barbario?
Yes.
DeBeech?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Meth?
Yeah, yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stanziel?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, Von Aiken, I apologize.
Yes.
Just as an aside, we have a few regulars at council meetings that raised the issue about water shortage and, and closed down pumps, so this is one of, one of the three that we will be fixing, so maybe we won't get those questions at council meetings anymore, or maybe we will.
No, they'll be back.
All right, moving on to the next application. Application Number 21:523, Seven Enton Realty Associates, Seven Enton Road, Block 202, Lot 9, Spot 03, Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan for instance, installation of rooftop solar panels and construction of carports.
So, good evening, Board members. My name is Jennifer Porter. I'm an attorney with CSG Law located in West Orange, New Jersey, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. It's Enton Road Realty Associates in care of Sterling Management, and we're here in connection with their application for preliminary and final major site plan approval, in connection with the proposed installation of solar carports and solar roof mount arrays at their property located at Seven Enton Road, and designated on the Persipony Troy Hills tax maps as Block 22, or, excuse me, Block 202, Lot 9.03. or, excuse me, Block 202, Lot 9.03. In addition to site plan approval, the applicant is also requesting relief to the extent that it's necessary to maintain a pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback for the existing building, which is located at 45 feet from the property line, whereas 75 feet is required. The proposed carports will not impact any of these setbacks and no zoning relief is required, nor is any other bulk relief required in connection with the proposed installations. Proper notice has been provided to adjacent property owners within 200 feet of the subject property, as well as published in the daily record in connection with tonight's hearing. Just by way of background, it has become increasingly difficult for landlords to keep tenants in their older office buildings. And in an effort to keep this building marketable and to continue to attract new tenants, the applicant is embracing green technology initiatives with this proposed solar project. It is noted that solar projects like this support the initiatives of New Jersey's Energy Master Plan. And although this is a permitted use in the SED 3 zone in which it's located, we do note also that solar technology is and has been designated as an inherently beneficial use under the municipal land use law. This evening, we will present testimony from our professional civil engineer, Adolf Montana of PS&amp;F, who will walk the board through the site plan and the other aspects of the project. Mr. Montana will then also go through the comment letters that have been received by the applicant in connection with tonight's application. We also have with us a property owner management representative. And we have a representative from Geoscape Solar, which is the solar provider for the project, who are here to the extent that there are any questions by the board that cannot be addressed by Mr. Montana. If the board has no question for me, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Montana.
So we want to start with the waivers. Our planner will walk through. I'm assuming you received the memo from BFJ Planning?
Yes.
And you're aware of the waivers?
Yes, we are.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a letter dated November 23rd, 2021 from BFJ. There are a number of waivers that I would like to walk through. The first is a request for a waiver from the DEP Letter of Interpretation. The comment is, the southern wooded portion of the property appears to be DEP-regulated wetland. However, no improvements are indicated in this area. And that waiver has been recommended from BFJ. The second one is a Highlands-related comment. The project would not alter impervious coverage and is exempt from Highlands regulations. So once again, that waiver is recommended. Moving towards preliminary major plat details and requirements in terms of a general description, that has not been provided. The applicant was asked to provide testimony with detail on the proposed improvements. I'm assuming that will come forthwith. In terms of natural features, the site is developed and the wooded wetland area at the southern end is not part of the proposed work. So that waiver was recommended. In terms of spot elevations, no changes to the building are proposed. That waiver was recommended. Terms of floor plans, no new buildings or changes to the existing buildings are proposed. Again, that waiver was recommended. No signage appears to be proposed. Can you please confirm that?
That's correct.
So that waiver is recommended. In terms of fences, walls, and sidewalks, no changes or new such improvements are proposed. Again, that waiver is recommended. Terms of utilities, no changes to utilities are proposed. Again, waiver's recommended. In terms of storm drainage, no changes are proposed. And the carport structures are proposed over or on existing paved areas. So that waiver is recommended. In terms of landscaping, no new landscaping is proposed. That waiver is recommended. In terms of soil erosion and sediment control, no grading changes are proposed. That waiver is recommended. Terms of solid waste, no waste receptacles are proposed. Again, that waiver is recommended. Use of non-residential buildings, there is no change to the principal uses proposed. So that waiver is recommended. Traffic study, there's no change to the traffic patterns that will occur. So that waiver is recommended. Environmental assessment report, the proposed structures are on existing impervious areas, not within or adjacent to any structures or any natural features, excuse me. So that waiver is recommended. No tree removal is proposed. So a waiver is recommended for the tree protection and removal plan. In terms of the final major site plan details and requirements, the applicant is seeking combined preliminary and final approval. So the conditions of preliminary approval and separate sheets for final major site plan approval, both of those waivers are recommended. Is there anything that was perhaps missed that you would be seeking a waiver for?
I don't believe so. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Do I hear a motion moving the proposed waivers as stated in the BFJ memo?
Motion.
Second. All right. If you could call the roll, Nora, please.
Barbario?
Yes.
Deitch?
Yes.
Di Piero?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Dan Diel?
Yes.
Vili?
Yes.
Bonakin?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right. All yours, counsel.
So I would like to call my first witness, Mr. Montana.
Please raise your hand, sir. Do you swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last for the record, and provide us with your professional address, please.
Adolf Montana. A-D-O-L-F. Montana, M-O-N-T-A-N-A. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have over 20 years of experience. And the address is Three Mountain View Road, Warham, New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman? All right. People find him acceptable as the, I don't hear any objections, so please.
Okay. I have my exhibit right on my right-hand side. It's called R01 entitled Site Plan Rendering, which is pretty much a colored version of the site plan, Sheet C4, that is part of your package. The existing site is approximately 8.36 acres and also known as Block 202, Lot 903. The project site is situated on the Specialized Economic Development District, SED 3 Zone, within the township of Persipony. The existing site is surrounded by Enton Road on the west, 287 on the east, Lot 9.04 on the north, and Lot 9 on the south side. Currently, the site has a two-story office building that has access on Enton Road via two driveways, one on the north and one on the south. The applicant is proposing to construct a wide-frame solar carports located on the existing asphalt parking lot. As you can see, there is two arrays on the south side and two arrays on the north side. Array 1 and 2 on the south side consists of 312 panels. And Array 3 and 4 on the north side contain 204 panels. And in addition, our client proposing to construct roof mount to solar arrays located on the roof of the existing building, as shown in the exhibit. That's the one within the building envelope of the existing building. The current proposed layout complies with the required setback, as shown on the signing table located on Sheet C1 of the package and also shown on the exhibit on the lower left-hand corner. The front yard setback proposed that requires 75, we're providing 95.1. One side yard requires 35 feet, we're providing 135.4 feet. Both side yards combined is 75 required, we're providing 1,250.7 feet. Rear yard is 50 feet required, we're providing 50 feet. There is no change to impervious coverage through the site. The existing impervious coverage currently is 53.2% and maximum allowed is 70. So no change in impervious coverage. The carport is a wide-frame steel structure supported by a series of columns installed on top of the existing asphalt parking lots. The existing foundation will extend approximately 2 feet off the ground to protect column from vehicle impact. And also, the foundation will extend 10 feet below the ground for a total of 12 feet. In addition, the carport has a height clearance that ranges between 15.8 feet at the center of the array and extends about 20.3 clearance at the outer edges. Array 1 and Array 2 are approximately 178.8 feet long by 42.4 feet wide. Array 3 and 4 is 116.9 feet long by 42.4 foot wide. The total square footage for the array is approximately 25,012 square feet with approximately 1,032 solar panels. The solar arrays will have 26 canopy LED light fixtures manufactured by RAP Lighting. The wall pack light fixtures are aluminum diecast with tempered glass refractors. The light fixtures will be mounted underneath the steel structure with a mounting height of approximately 16.5 feet and would eliminate the existing parking lot underneath. The light levels at the north parking lots are at 1.7-foot candle average with a maximum of 12.1-foot candles and a minimum of 0.1-foot candles, as shown on your lighting plan on Sheet C5 of your package. The southern parking lot has similar levels with 1.7-foot candle average and a maximum of 10-foot candles and a minimum of 0.1-foot candles. The project was not to start more than one acre and it's not increasing impervious coverage. Therefore, no additional storm management measures are needed for this project. The solar arrays will not interfere with the existing drainage patterns as runoff will fall through the solar panel gaps into the existing pavement and then sheet flow to the existing catch basin as it does today. In addition, a Morris Council solar conservation district certification is not anticipated for this project as the total disturbing is less than 5,000 square feet. The solar arrays proposed will not interfere with emergency personnel as the two existing driveways that circle around the existing building will not have any obstruction through the drive aisles. We have received a common letter from the Persipony Association District 6, dated November 17th, 2021, which had a few comments. The comments were related to location of the shut-off, the power shut-off for the solar panels, which, you know, the solar designer will provide some more information about that, where that location will be. Similarly, they had, the fire department had some questions regarding the signage for the power shut-off. Again, I'll defer that to the designer, solar design engineer. And finally, they had some recommendations regarding construction dumpsters. They want to make sure there's 15 feet away from the building during construction. And they want to make sure that the contractor keeps emergency access open at all times. Right to the hearing, we received a sewer department letter, memo, dated November 9th, 2021, with two comments. The two comments was that they wanted to see the sanitary sewer easement on the site plan, which in the package that you have was not shown. The second comment was to indicate that they do not want the solar carports on top of the easement. So based on those two comments, we prepared an updated layout that I'm going to show you. So as you can see in red, this is the sanitary sewer easement on the previous.
Would you take your microphone with you so you continue to be recorded?
As you can see on exhibit, this is R2. It's site plan rendering with revised layout. As you can see in red, that's the location of the sanitary sewer easement. And the sanitary, and the sewer department did not want us to be on top of that. So we slide the two arrays, Array 1 and 2, to the south to avoid the easement as requested. There was no comment on a drainage easement located on the north of the parking lot. But, you know, being proactive, we separated the array, you know, by, you know, make it into two pieces. So now we have Array 3, 4, 5, and 6. So there's no obstacles if in the case this thing means.
Mr. Attorney, this is thank you, Mark.
Counsel, was this presented as part of the original plan submitted to the board?
No. What had happened was we had gotten comments from the sewer department. And so this evening, this will all be presented as part of resolution compliance. But we wanted to show the board tonight how we will go about satisfying all the comments, including those from the sewer department, because we didn't want to be in a position where we couldn't certify for the record that we can satisfy all of the comments from all of the different agencies. And so what we wanted to do is give this board a preview of what the plan will look like in order to comply with all of those comments, because it will require the splitting of those panels. So in order for us to certify tonight and say we will fully address all the comments, we know that as part of resolution compliance, that is what the final product is going to look like. But this just came about as part of this hearing.
Why don't we mark this as A1?
Okay.
And we'll title it the Revised Site Layout. What's the date of that?
Last revised January 4th, 2022.
So A1 Revised Site Layout due January 4th, 2022.
If you could mark that sheet, please.
Sure. A1?
With the number of the case, 21:523. That way Nora will know what she's looking at.
Okay, so I'll just continue to describe a little bit of the layout that you see on A1. So as I stated before, the layout that you see on the south side is to avoid the 10-foot wide sanitary sewer easement that was mentioned by the sewer department. And the layout that you see on the north side is to avoid the 30-foot wide storm drainage easement. Array number 1 is approximately 175.7 feet long by 42.6 feet wide with 306 panels. Array 2 is 234.3 feet long by 42.6 foot wide with 408 panels. On the north parking lot, as you can see on the exhibit, all the Array 3 and all Array 4 were split. And now you have Array 3 that is 44.8 feet long by 42 feet wide. Array 5 is 41.3 feet by 42.6. Array 4 is 48.8 by 42.6. Now Array 6 is 41.3 by 42.6. The total square footage of the array for the new layout is approximately 24,766 feet, square feet, with 1,014 solar panels. So basically, it's getting smaller. It's a smaller footprint and slightly less solar panels. The new layout will not have an impact on the drainage patterns, as stated before. No impact to lighting levels, no additional disturbance. And as you can see, it decreased slightly by 18 solar panels. There's a couple other common letters that we received. We received one from Mr. Andrew Canjiano. And that letter was dated December 20, 2021. He has six comments. The applicant should include all existing easements on the plan, on the final plan. As you can see on the exhibit, we showed on the exhibit, but we'll show it on the resolution compliant plans as well. Mr. Canjiano is also asking for written permission from the owners of the two easements, which, you know, as we have the sanitary sewer easement approval, they reviewed the latest layout and they had no issues. Number 2, it talks about if we're going to disturb one acre or more of disturbance, we're not doing that. Number 3, as I stated before, we do not need a Morris Council of Conservation District certification because we're not disturbing more than 5,000 square feet. Advocate should inquire any comments from the fire department. As stated before, we did receive a common letter from District Number 6 and with the comments that I stated before. The applicant should testify the building roof currently contains solar panels. My understanding is it is, but I'll let the solar designer testify on that issue. And number 6, site plan canopy, it tells you when to kick canopy down spot. I stated before, the, you know, runoff will fall through the panels and. the, you know, runoff will fall through the panels into the existing pavement and to the existing drainage. So no change to the patterns, to the drainage patterns. And there was another letter from the water department dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. They had no comments. And I just saw a comment from the planner that I haven't seen before, but I think those two comments were addressed through waivers. Right, the first comment had to do with the existing solar arrays on the roof. As I stated before, it's my understanding that the rest solar panels that will be removed, the new ones will be installed, but I, I'll let the solar designer comply, you know, testify on that comment. And on number two, to me, it's we're meeting the set by criteria of the front yard setback with provide ninety five point one, which seventy five footage requires, so it's a non-issue. And that's all I have.
All right. You have Mr. Planner, do you have some?
Yeah, I would just like to clarify the last item that Mr. Montana spoke about. If you look on the cover sheet to the plans, on the zoning chart, there is a line that says minimum front yard setback for the building, minimum front yard setback for the carport. Both are listed as required seventy five feet. Both are well below, the one for the building is forty feet, the one for the carport is ninety five point one feet, but they're both listed as pre-existing non-conformities. And that was, I think, the planner's issue.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha.
So I, I guess the question is if you can confirm that they, that this chart is correct, and then they are not pre-existing non-conformities, they are simply conforming.
Well, for the buildings, an existing non-conformance, right now, the building sits at forty six feet where seventy five foot is required, that's for the building. But, but for the carport, we're complying by having ninety five point one feet where seventy five feet is required.
That was a typo on the plan.
Yeah, so we need to.
So instead of being an existing non-conformity, it's not, it conforms because the, exactly.
So just when you go to revise the plans for resolution compliance and you could just correct that?
Yeah, that, that will just say no instead of the N C.
Thank you.
Mr. Canjano, do you have?
Yeah, two things just to follow up on. Electrical equipment, is there going to be ground mounted or exterior electrical equipment?
I'm gonna let the, the solar designer comment on that. I'm, I'm not sure how the system exactly works.
And then, because we'll need to show that on the site plan.
We can sure do that.
And then trenching, I presume there's going to be trenching, electrical trenching from each solar array that also should be shown on the.
Yeah, just my understanding is one and a half inch conduit that connects the, the solar panels. So we'll show that on the plans for resolution.
The trenching detail. And so with that, so you'll have a decent amount of disturbance, and you're saying that all that adds up to be less than five thousand square feet?
That's my understanding, but if it is more, we're certainly gonna have.
You will need to go for the S E D.
Of course. But my understanding, what they're telling me is less than five thousand.
And just so to clarify, maybe this is for the, the solar array specialist, but so the panels, the roof runoff, the, the roof, did you testify the roof runoff just comes right through the panels?
Yeah, my understanding, there's gaps within the panels, so we'll just sheet flow on the panel and then they'll go through the gap, fall into the table.
Okay, so it's not concentrated at one location?
No, it'll just fall between the panels.
Okay. Okay. I think that was my question, thank you.
The members of the board, have any questions on this witness?
Mr. Chairman, so first of all, I just want to thank you or commend you, congratulate you for taking a step towards green initiative. Actually, a lot of steps there, so thank you for that. A couple of quick questions. One, while we are raising these structures over solar panels, are we losing any parking spots, specifically any handicap spots, any impact to those?
No, there's no impact to the handicap spaces.
Okay. And assuming before these structures were being raised, the traffic flow for any evacuation stays the same, is there any impact to that flow or that plan?
No, there's, like I stated on my testimony, we have fifteen foot or higher for clearance, so shouldn't impact any, any circulation on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions by member, Mr. Math?
Certainly. I noticed on your plan, you have lighting details underneath the carport. There's lighting fixtures in them. What, I didn't notice on the survey any existing lighting poles. Is it, is the existing parking lot lit with poles?
Yes, there is existing light poles there as well. On the new layout, the four poles that we were planning to remove, they're gonna stay, which is gonna provide additional lighting by the front of the buildings.
I mean, have you prepared the plan to look at how the existing lighting works with?
My understanding, there's a light fixture here and a light fixture here and one here and here. And on the previous layout, they will get be removed because of the solar panels will fall within, you know, the health of the brand. So now, now they're gonna stay the way they are.
Okay, well, well, are the solar panels gonna impact lighting to the areas that they were lighting that are not under the solar panels?
No, there's proper covers throughout the site with the new canopy light fixtures and the existing fixtures.
Okay, and I guess, I had a question about ice, but I guess that's probably best for the solar panel person, right?
I would ask him from his experience, what happens with ice and snow on top of the panels?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other members of the board, Mr. Napol.
Of course, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this. The, on the, were you split the two of them? What is that, then, as it read again?
That's a drainage easement on the north side.
All right, so if there was an issue with that, and I don't know, trucks had to get in there and bulldoze it and dig it out, would they mess the footings of what your, of your panels?
No, that's the reason why we split them.
So there's enough, there's enough space there?
Enough space to maintain the drainage line.
Okay.
Any other members of the board have any questions on this at this time? Hearing and seeing none. If there anybody in the, in the public that would like to question this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, you have more witnesses?
I do. In light of the, the comments that were deferred and some of the comments raised by the board, I'd like to call a second witness, Mr. Neil Erman from Geoscape.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide as should be professional address.
E R N A N, and I'm from Geoscape Solar.
Professional address, sir?
What was that?
Your professional address.
Thirty eight Greland Road, Farm Mart, New Jersey.
You give the board the benefit of your qualifications, please.
I've been with the company for eight years. I've been certified by Sunpower Corporation as a master sales person. I'm not an engineer.
He's testifying specifically in terms of this field as a, as a solar provider. He's not testifying as an expert.
Okay, so it's a fact witness?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I believe there's some questions pertaining to this.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Erman.
Either carry the microphone or sit, so we can record everything.
So Mr. Erman, a couple of the questions that came up already, if I could run through them, because I, I tried to mark them as we went along. One of the questions by a member of the board concerned the electrical equipment.
Sure. We will have a.
Oh, can you take the microphone?
Testing? Nope. Has it turned on?
On the button.
We'll have a, right over here is the, the new JCPenel meter that they put in, and there'll be an exterior disconnect, which will be able to shut the entire system down of the roof system and all carports at one location. There'll be placards on the building as well as in this general area where the transformer and the JCPenel metering is.
Is there additional transformers going in?
Yes. There'll be transformers up in the, in the I beams of the array to look at a cross section. Do you have plans there? There's a, the inverters will actually be in, in the steel structure. The inverters for the, the rooftop will also be roof mounted on strut.
So just to be clear, is there any new equipment on the surface on the ground?
No.
Okay. And then also, my other question was about the.
Oh, the trenching.
The trenching, but the drainage.
Sure. So with the trenching, what we're gonna do is the, the, the arrays will be daisy chained, so there'll be a one and a half inch conduit coming from the lower array here to this array, and these two arrays will also be connected, and it'll come together through the easement and then brought straight to the building. And then it'll be brought into the main distribution center within the building. And the carport, I mean, the, the rooftop will just be coming straight down through a pitch pocket directly into the, into the gear.
Same for the south side?
Yeah, so this again will be a trench from here to here, and then we're gonna come straight across. And the, the service within the building is right over here, right where the transformer is, and that's where the main distribution and disconnect will be. Oh, drainage. So with the carports, in between each panel, you've got a half inch gap, and what's gonna happen is the, the array is sort of like a Y, so the water will run off each, and there's three, three panels per angle, so it's total of six. It'll come off the first one, the second will roll to the next, and so on and so forth, and just basically drips through the array. So when it's raining, you're still gonna get wet, but it won't be as heavy, and then the water will just flow as normally would.
I think there's a question on icing?
So with icing being that this is a Y channel, the, the, the snow will collect at the Y, but then as the sun comes up, and the panels do get warm once the sun comes out, so that'll cause more melt and then just drip down from the center.
There's no danger of any ice falling through that? It's just.
It's just gonna drip.
Okay.
It's not, it's, it's not a single array where typically you put ice guards on the bottom. This will just basically come to a center and just sort of sit there until it starts dripping down.
So this project's already been metered by JCPenel, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
They've, they've consolidated the meters for the building. It's their new policy with any service upgrades.
Okay, and let's see, how many watts will this be per year?
Six hundred and eighty watts, I believe. Have to look at it, it's been a while.
Kilowatts per year?
K W, yes.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna produce about ninety percent of the overall building load.
That's my next question, that's awesome.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Other members of the board have questions?
Ninety percent. The planning board approved something very similar to this a number of years ago that was constructed. And when the, the solar panel experts got there and installed all their solar panels over the carports, they decided that there were too many trees that might be blocking the solar panels. So they cut a whole row of trees down, which destroyed the buffer to a residential area. So Sedgefield residents were unhappy because they could now see Route Ten and, and this development when they couldn't before. Never discussed during the planning board hearing. So my question to you is, because I remember that, are there any trees you're gonna have to remove to provide adequate sun for these solar panels?
No trees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members, any questions by other members of the board?
How many E V stations are underneath these panels?
There'll be no E V stations, but over here, they're already, they've already been installed. I believe it's eight, two, two port, level two chargers.
No other questions by members?
I, I just wonder why you chose to not use the carport or the solar panels as, as protection from the elements? What was the decision behind that? With the draining in between, you're still wet underneath.
Right, yeah. Well, so when you, when you have the Y frame, what would happen is that they have to put another substructure underneath the array, and then that would have to then go into the ground, go into a well, and then to do the drainage, and the, the cost for that is prohibitive.
Okay, and I guess for my own benefit, why the Y frame instead of what we're maybe a little more familiar with?
For the production, strictly for the production. The D C conversion to A C power, we're getting a lot more production versus doing a single tilt because of the, the way the, the property sits and where the carports sit on the property with the azimuth coming over, you'll.
Yeah.
Better.
Okay.
Better production.
Any other questions by members of the board of this witness?
Chairman, I have a question for a board engineer. It looks like the foundation for the actual girder holding the posts up is two feet, one inch.
Well, some of them are ten feet, looks like some of them are widespread footings. These calculations will have to be submitted for building department review and approval.
Yeah. I just was curious, I'm sitting looking at one as two foot, one inch, if there's any issues with visibility for cars packing into those spaces potentially hitting those.
Oh, that it's raised, you're saying it's raised out of the ground two foot?
Yeah.
Now, that's pretty standard to have the raised, any kind of light fixture or pedestal is protection, like when a car does hit it, it's not wrecking the structure.
Okay, that's sufficient for.
Yeah.
And also, the, the piers will be on the hash mark of the parking spot, so basically it'll sit, one pier will sit where four spots are.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, do you have more witnesses or?
I do not, unless the board has further questions.
All right, any further questions from the board at this time? Counselor, you have anything? We got enough detail on?
I have nothing further.
Do you wish to sum at this time?
Chairman, if I may do. Mr. Weiser?
I'm not sure who to address this to, so, Mr. Parker, I'll just address it to you, or Porter, right?
Porter.
We heard a couple minutes ago that there were electric vehicle charging stations on site. I'm wondering how they conform with the recent D C A model ordinance requiring the charging stations, and whether that's even applicable given the nature of this application?
Yeah, I mean, that was done separate, separate and apart from this application, so it's not part of, of what's being proposed in connection tonight. I know that there has been recent D C A guidance in terms of, of existing office buildings and the need to, to bring their standards up to speed. I don't know, we haven't done.
So these, these car chargers were put in through P S E N G through a program years ago? So this is before the whole, the new code for D C A?
Right, it is my understanding that the, the new model ordinance is not guidance, it is directive from D C A.
That's correct, yeah, that's my understanding too.
What I would ask is that as you go to, back to resolution compliance, take a look at that and let us know your opinions on, on how compliant it is, whether there is anything additionally that the.
That could be done in.
That could be done, that would have to be done.
Yep.
I, I can add to that. We created a new ordinance in the zoning department for E V car charging stations, and I did visit the site today, and they meet a few of the requirements, but not all of the requirements. The new requirements require green striping along the parking lot in the spaces so that people can see them as easily driving through. So, and I have yet to actually issue a permit with that new code and compliance, so we can get that to you and show you it's brand new to us.
That would be great.
Zoning's enforcing it, but the signs looked correct. There's, there's just, there's striping required in the spaces and things, and I'm not even positive, I have not even been told yet by the attorneys as to whether I can make someone who has existing.
You can start enforcing.
Enforcing that, or if I'm just doing that to new, new locations, but, but we can get that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Good point. All right. Any members of the public that wish to speak in opposition to this application, in favor of this application? Counselor, if you'd like to sum?
Sure, the board heard, heard the testimony this evening from our civil engineer as well as from our solar producer and fact witness. And just with respect to this application, we, you know, as I indicated in our introduction, you know, you're dealing with an older office building here, you're dealing with a landlord who, who takes great pride in this building and wants to ensure for the future longevity of it, and so as part of. And so as part of that effort, you know, they are wanting to remain attractable to new tenants and to, you know, to continue to have that marketability of this site. And, um, in light of that, they have been looking for and, and polling, um, their tenants as to what types of things, what types of amenities, quote unquote, they would like to see at the site, and green energy initiatives are a very important, um, thing that is, that is coming to bear in the context of, you know, existing site provisions for tenants. Um, and not only that, as I had mentioned at the beginning, um, you have the New Jersey, uh, Energy Master Plan, which is encouraging, um, clean energy initiatives, renewable energy, and so this again helps, uh, you know, each little piece, um, goes a long way towards meeting those objectives across the state. Um, New Jersey, you know, at this point in time, I think, has 5% of its renewable energy goals and needs to get into the 30s. I believe by 2030, we have to be at 50%, and so we have a long way to go to meet those goals. Um, with respect to this application, as you heard from the testimony, there's little to no impact to the exist, there's no change to the, the existing building, there's no impacts in, in terms of drainage or other aspects of the site. Um, it's very minimal in terms of, um, intrusion, it doesn't impact the existing access or traffic or any of those things, no impact to trees, um, you know, or removal of trees required, and so therefore, for all of those reasons, um, we would respectfully ask that this board consider a vote of approval and support of this application this evening.
Okay, I'll close the evidentiary portion of this, uh, application at this time.
Can I just ask, uh, not really related to this application, but just from my own knowledge, solar panels. What is the anticipated life of a solar panel or this array?
They, they are, they are guaranteed, warranted for 25 years of power production to be 88% efficient from the day it came out of the box.
25 years?
Yeah.
Are any of these made in the United States, the solar panels?
Uh, yes.
They are?
Uh, these, these panels are not, these are made in Turkey.
Well, there are some that are made in the U.S.
Uh, Sun Power Corporation, as well as, uh, Hanwa, it's called, it's called Q cells, made in Georgia.
Okay.
They do about three gigawatts a year out of Georgia, and they're opening another facility for another three gigs, uh, out of, uh, Tend, Oregon.
Okay, that was my own knowledge. I was just curious.
All right, are there any comments, or do we wanna entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the motion to approve the application number 21, colon, 523, block 202, lot 9 dot O3. Preliminary and final measure site planned for installation of rooftop, solar panels, and construction of carports.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the approval.
All right, Nora, if you could call a roll, please?
Berrio.
Yes.
Didich.
Yes.
Di Piero.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Palatano.
Yes.
Stansio.
Yes.
Vili.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. Unless we are moving forward, your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before we say goodnight tonight, um, thank you all for coming, thank you all for your service. I'm looking, again, looking forward to a good year with this board and, uh, keeping precipitating in good shape. So, do I have a motion to adjourn at this time?
So moved? I'm ready to go home.
All in favor?[1787.34]